Good morning. My call meeting order, notice meeting was properly posted Wednesday, September the 6th, 2017. Item three, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of discussion meeting on 9/11/17.
Motion in second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item four, discussion of view and possible action regarding Tiff project specific to Tiff number two. Stacy. Item A, the annex roof replacement.
I have nothing new on that.
Here, but, sorry. Item B, annex elevator.
Nothing new on that.
Item C is the annex front entrance and security.
Yeah, I have some pictures for you guys. It's kind of a rendering of what we were thinking about. Putting a new front entrance on the front of this building that would let us move the security to the north, get them out of the hallway, down on one. And that's kind of the trend of what's been going on. A few years ago, the federal courthouse did similar types of arrangements. I have a picture of Ed. And then the length of the building built in the downtown area, Chase Bank, they did the same type of front entry. So it's kind of a trend. It works. It's what's being used. And it's what the staff would recommend that you consider. And it gives us the space we need to solve the problem in the lobby.
Have you seen the new location of this court building?
Have not.
This is.
Is it them or is it got something different?
You can actually at that building go in and pay before you ever have to pay, you know, court fines or whatever it is, parking ticket, before you ever go through the security. And have pay windows here.
I don't know if we've got the space to accommodate all that.
I understand. Yeah, it's pretty bad. They're opening employers, wide open. But you don't, actually, the pay windows are on the outside before you go through security. Just which one?
We'll definitely look at it.
So Stacy, in knowing this is a conceptual idea, how far down the road have you gotten with regard to potential cost estimates, utility relocations, time to construct, what would be the plan in the, before we were something like this? Where are we at on all those items?
The construction of something like the federal courthouse there is less than $150,000 for the construction. That fits our budget. What may not fit is the security equipment the sheriff's using. If we use the same that they have down there now, which some of the sheriff's people said is what they want to use, there's no additional cost. I've also heard that that needs to be replaced, and that might affect the budget a little bit. But they also have grants they get sometimes for that type of stuff, so that could maybe be part of the solution if we had to buy some new security equipment. So I think, you know, this plan fits, fits the budget that we've been looking at.
What would you, perhaps I'm going to be wrong in my assumption, and I know what usually happens when that, but before, I mean, there's a lot of stuff. We're real good at getting these conceptual plans and thinking, yeah, they're great, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that needs to be determined beforehand. Number one, if this entrance can't remain open during construction, what is the plan to get people in and out of this building? And have we even begun to discuss that with the sheriff's department?
No. No, that's just a case of take place. This is just step one in a long process of getting the next project moving forward. So we have kind of a conceptual plan, and you're right, we need, if we decide to go forward with this, we got to look at utilities, we got to look at the construction sequencing, how the security of the building works during that construction, which is probably a eight, nine, enough construction.
This is existing, correct? Any existing entrance?
Uh, I think where that handicap door is, probably.
Entrance, hall, main door? This right here?
Yeah.
So it's possible that we can build this and then switch to that?
Take advantage of that handicap door. That's part of your sequencing, yes.
Could still have a few with security. What's in with that?
Can we have funds available to begin this project?
We do.
Once we get all those other minor details worked out. So what's your pleasure, gentlemen? Anything, just to receive this drawing, having began to work with the sheriff's department on a plan?
Don't we need a whole, whole suite of moving?
Well, I think part of, I think part of the thing that we need to do in order to get to what details we need is, they need to begin to have discussions with the sheriff's department about how we're going to get people in and out of this building, if that's not, what you're talking about, it's not possible.
We've got the other entrance in the actual courthouse.
Yes, the west entrance?
Well, I don't know if it exists, the one that's open now. It would be tight, and they would be pushing a whole lot of people through a very small point.
Not handicapped accessible, I don't think.
Fifty percent. And in the west end, we have plenty of room to build a ramp.
I think for today, what I was trying to advance was, do you like the concept? Do you like the look? Because that's, that's pretty critical, how your building will look. Do you like the concept, or do you want us to research further, like Rick suggested on the municipal board? If you like the concept, we start looking at details.
Well, I think whatever it is that we might look at, whether we like this concept or something else, we need to begin to have discussions about how we're going to get people in and out of here, especially in light of the ADA. The only way that would work at this point is for them to come through the west gate and access over here in the courthouse, if that lift even works.
Nice question.
Well, and that, but that again involves the sheriff's department, and opening the door, and, I mean.
Security there. So, so the motion is instruct staff to set together a timeline of events, and work with the sheriff's office to do what we need to do in order to get people in and out. And, yeah, to consider ADAs.
I mean, I like, I think it looks good. I think it would be great, but.
You got that door down there in the west end. Anyway, that's motion.
We need to check into feasibility of this. Ingress, egress, all that stuff.
During the strike.
Looks like we'll be taking out one of the flower beds or something, right?
Is there a second?
Is that a second?
Yes, you would be taking that flower bed out.
You would be taking out a flower bed, okay.
Okay, there's a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Stacy. All right, so we're off to item D, which is maintenance and lighting of the exterior of the annex.
The maintenance work continues, going well, the lighting, uh, lighting, and in case we got.
There is, there's one color that we did exclude, and that's black. So lighting is done, it can be controlled, and.
Who's got the controller?
John Dennis, our electrician today.
What's the name, Tom?
Goodness, I don't know. Wish I was scheduled. All right. Item D, the ninth floor of the courthouse, the demolition and the elevator.
Uh, we had a walkthrough on the demolition, and there was nothing on the punch list. There was three additional items that they wanted to take out, those were approved by the board as a change order, and that work will take place over the next couple of weeks. And we've already began to look at bids for the next step, which is the end last thing that we're going to do in there.
And what's the fire department?
So we're not, we're not holding up any progress in thinking about the build out, which maybe that's the next item.
Mr. Chairman, before we make lunch, I had something about this.
Sure, Renee.
I had mentioned to Miles that we continue to have trouble with the elevators in the courthouse, and he said this was the section that I didn't need to have anything new added to the agenda to bring it up, the elevators was on there. Because again, today, on a jury week, for the third week in a row, starting into the fourth week, I have two elevators working. Last week, I had one elevator working, but I have 417 drawers in the building, and a rape case, two murder cases, which involved a number of attorneys, witnesses, et cetera, and again, only two elevators today. And I'm wondering if this elevator, is this particular project with the elevators going to do anything to help us have a more permanent availability of the elevators for the infected people?
No, I think we're just taking the existing ones, and then they go up to the ninth floor when we're done with this project, and be able to access the lead floor, but you're not getting any additional elevators.
That's correct, no additional elevators.
Well, I just hope this really has to work.
Me too.
I mean, seriously, it's, it's a huge problem.
Well, let me ask you this, and I understand this is an inconvenience, but are people not being able to get to the courtroom?
Not highly, no. And when you have a number of people down there, and you've got one elevator working, and you have people that are heading down.
Right, but we have elevators in this building with crossovers, and I understand the handicap issue, and I am fully supportive of making sure that anyone who has a disability can get wherever they need to be, but there are alternatives. Now, I am, I am, just like you, and I think probably everybody here, frustrated that our elevators seem to be hotlocked on any given day in either one of these buildings. So it's not something that is just exclusive to the courthouse. And we've, we've talked about elevators unlocked. So what, what is the solution in general?
Well, unfortunately, the problem we have is, you can come to the elevator over here and get to the third floor, the fifth floor, you can't get to six, seven, eight. You can't get to all the floors that you need to by accessing these elevators, you still have to go over here to catch an elevator, which you can't do.
I understand. Currently, the C elevator is down, parked on the order for its repair. We did have two elevators down last week. Coney responds, and they, they're our elevator provider, service provider. They do respond, and they do a good job. The elevators get so much work, so much traffic. If you recall, the elevators in the annex, we put the door mechanisms in, and we still have issues and problems with those. Anytime somebody tries to stop an elevator door from closing, or push on it, or manhandle things like that, it's sensitive equipment, and it can fail at any time, and does. I don't know that we can't believe we can do anything to improve the reliability, or the length of time it takes for an elevator car to reach a particular floor. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but I'll, I'll ask again. I've asked Coney before, is there anything we can do to just? Are they the only game in town? They're not, they're not. Well, perhaps that's part of the solution, right? If someone believes that they have an exclusive captive audience, then timeliness may not be of the utmost importance. Perhaps it's time to look at finding somebody else. Perhaps if we can, we can do that, we'll work with Jane and do that. I don't know that it's the response of the issue that we're facing as much as the abuse of the elevators pays. But we'll certainly look at that.
I understand.
It is frustrating for everybody.
Don't we have a contract, service contract?
Yes.
That we approve?
Yes. For example, for example, we have the ability to call, contact them on the weekend, just this past weekend, we have painting contractors in here who were working and accidentally caused all of the elevators in the annex to default to the first floor. Coney was responsive, Coney came out, and at no charge helped us restore the elevator service. So we get service, we get service after hours, and they're trying to do a good job. Right, I, I think it's probably not a one-stop solution, right? I mean, there's dealing with aging infrastructure, I recognize that. We have a lot of people in this building, we have alternative methods to get most people to where they need to be. But it is frustrating, and I understand Renee's frustration, I understand, heck, you can't even get to the basement of this building at times. I'm not worried about me getting there.
I understand. So, the one project on the cliff that does that capacity, it was an elevator in this building, where we don't have an elevator now. And you had, the guys looked at that, and they said, we might consider an escalator rather than an elevator.
That's right. He, he looked at the traffic pattern. This was Coney's representative, who came from Kansas City to do a traffic study in the annex in the courthouse. I think we discussed this before. His suggestion, after watching how people move, discussing with the sheriff's department where people go, watching the court rooms fill, and where people populate, his conclusion at the time was an additional elevator in this building, the annex, where we have an empty elevator shaft, will not help the problem. He said, most of the issues that we have are in the courthouse. That large group of people congregate on, in the center, in basically the middle of the courthouse, on the third, fifth floors. And that's where the suggestion of an escalator came into play. He said that, that moves people more quickly and economically, it's cheaper to install in an elevator. There was some discussion about whether or not we could install an additional elevator on the exterior of the courthouse and serve, serve the building in some way that way. And his suggestion was to consider an escalator at that, at that time.
And the escalator is between the two buildings, between the annex and the courthouse?
That was his suggestion, was perhaps where you have the skywalk now, on the third, fourth, and fifth floors. His suggestion was to, in some ways, install an escalator from the ground floor to serve the third and the fifth floors. He completely eliminated need for, for elevators at that time. It's hard to visualize, it's hard for me to visualize how that would be installed. I, I can't see that. He could, and apparently he knows, does kind of things for it. First I've heard of elevators.
Escalators.
Escalators, sorry. Thank you. I don't know about the others on this group, but I, it's the first time I've heard that that's even been mentioned or discussion, discussion with a vendor, potentially. Yeah, it's hard for me to visualize.
Is this exterior or interior?
Both. And, and this was all, this was all just brief conversation after he'd done the study. So. Well, let me ask you this. When was the study done?
I believe it was done in the summer, July, late July.
Well, then how about, at the next meeting, you provide us with a copy of that study so that we can have it, and then we can follow up with you regarding potential ways to move people better?
Sure.
So, as I understand it, you sort of like to, like, we wouldn't have had any drawers or, you know, or other really big, crowded issues that we have when that study was done.
He talked with Jason McDonald at the time, who gave him a pretty good idea as to what, what took place. And it may have been during that time, I don't know.
I think it was mostly verbal, he didn't give you a record.
There was a brief, a brief overview regarding what we had now and some recommendations that I recall. I'll bring it forward.
Okay. And just FYI, that's on the schedule for 2021 because of the cost of it?
We were looking primarily at ways to improve the transportation of people with what we have, with what we have currently. We did say that moving the jury assembly room to the first floor will help, but that won't address the need for people, once they know where they need to go, to get to the upper levels of courthouse. Anything else from you, please? Escalators, elevators, stairs.
Car holes?
Car stairs, remember? With?
Thank you, I appreciate you mediating.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, so with regard to four E, then we would ask Keith to provide us with a copy of the report at the next meeting. Okay? That's in form of a motion, I guess. Motion in second.
Aye.
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 All right. F, repurpose of the ninth floor.
All right. In order to keep them all moving forward on the ninth floor, we're still, we're not waiting for the demo to be done, we are moving forward. One thing we need to consider is where utilities for that build out are going to live. We've looked at maybe the tenth floor as becoming a utility floor, not only to help the ninth floor, but the whole building. Facilities like that idea, and we kind of heard Keith talk more about it, but if we get permission to do that, pretty much that's what it's going to be forevermore, as we lay out utilities up there, you won't be able to retrofit it for anything else. But there is a need to have, I think, space for utilities going forward.
And would that require us to demo any of the spaces on ten? Yes, and I think it would require some of that to be demolished. I don't know, without spending more time studying the utilities on, in the floor plan as it's approved on nine, what we, what we can and can't do, are held hostage to some degree by the beams, the four in place beams, that we can't drill through or remove through. So some of the ideas have been to penetrate the floor from ten to nine, to access those areas we need to serve for fire suppression, fire alarm, HVAC, and electrical service.
But this isn't complete demolition?
I don't think it's complete.
This is very selective, and something that you could do in-house?
No.
No.
Well, here again, it's one of those deals, right, we brought this conceptual idea, but not a whole lot of information was put, I mean, yeah, it sounds great, but what's the cost? What, do we require a structural engineer, are you going to pad into the floor? I mean, I appreciate you guys letting us know, but, I mean, that's about all we're getting, is, hey, we're considering this, what do you think? Well, I don't know. I don't have enough information to even begin to put together something. And I'm sorry, I'm cranky, but, I mean, I can't make an informed decision if I don't have information.
Sure.
You want to tell us? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question, but I was a cranky, cranky. No, I hadn't noticed.
Well, I don't know that it's cranky, I just like information.
No, I know, here's my question.
I would like to know.
The comment I heard Stacy made was that if you do this, you can't ever use the tenth floor for anything else. Well, as you know, we're already overcrowded on the eleventh floor jail getting inmates here, so at some point, a consideration may have to be made about using some space to help some additional inmates.
Yes. That is one of those considerations, which would involve talking to the sheriff's office to see what the feasibility is of that.
Well, there are efficiencies that can be addressed there, for sure. I'm not sure we're anywhere near the point of having to expand from eleven to ten yet. Maybe in 20 years, but hopefully something will be remedied within that time span.
How much space are you actually talking about for a utility closet? How much space is available to expand, holding of those awaiting trial? Yeah, I mean, there's a whole lot of. Great. I think the reason this was, was brought up certainly is how that the demolition is complete, and we have a clear field of vision on the floor, it's easy to see how some of these infrastructure items can be relocated, and how much, how much they're truly in the way now. What we do in this regard will certainly help determine the, the way the space looks and functions. It, this, what we're, what we're talking about now on ten, Keith's facing somebody, would that cost be included in this 650 that's estimated for the, the ninth floor? So we're not looking at going and finding additional plumbing to do outside demo, or?
From my understanding, in talking to him about this, it would actually be less expensive for us to do versus all the electrical work and plumbing work, and everything would have to be pretty expensive and creative on the ninth to be able to.
Right, yeah.
So, I, I, I mean, we can keep it on nine, but I think it's going to be a whole lot more expensive than.
Yeah, I'm not saying keep it on nine, I'm saying, here again, is something that I may be asked to make a recommendation on, that I don't know that I have enough information to move forward with.
I don't think you have enough information today, and we don't either, and we just begin our talks about how can we solve this problem. We're bringing it to you guys, just as a heads up, and then maybe get some feedback. Renee's already given us some feedback, maybe we haven't thought about. And we will actually put these numbers together, because we have to, it's the next step in this problem. And as we get these numbers and ideas together, we'll bring them to you. But I wanted to bring the concept to you today, just so you can be thinking of that.
Sounds like you're going to have even more pressure on the elevators as well.
Yes, yes.
For what?
Traffic. I mean, if you're going to have the DA in District Two over there, anybody else?
Not somewhere up this side.
Yeah, but still, how many people are, is that ninth floor going to hold? Forty, fifty?
Your witness, sheriff, centers by that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're, you're still adding elevator traffic.
That's right.
So the escalator study is even more important.
Sure. It's actually an elevator study that we've simply discussed.
Escalator, elevator.
We all asked. Is that all on F?
The motion to the E report.
Kim, just catch that, catch all for those others. Let's do G real quick. Jail lower roof?
Work continues on jail lower roof. We were able to get our parts out of Houston, and work is progressing.
All right. So on item four, we could have a motion to receive on all items that were discussed, exclusive of those for which we have specific motions that were recorded earlier. Four, so the.
Where are you standing?
All in favor? All right. Item five is related to remediation of the mold, a deal from county jail, safe.
The recurring item, the contractor is down there and is working, still looking at maybe first of January, completion.
And that's the kitchen, that's the kitchen.
That's a several-phase project, right?
It has been, yes.
So the kitchen, are you going to move over, right? To the offices?
Maybe the offices. Oh, I, I know what you're saying, that after we get the kitchen reinstalled, hopefully the mold has to come back to the kitchen, and then we can look at the mold on the other floors, and get this whole thing done.
Mm-hmm. So January, you're on just the kitchen, just the kitchen.
Does the holdup for re-insulation just the mold removal?
No, right now, he's over there fitting in some of the plumbing, but he's got his parts ordered for the HVAC, they're not, they haven't arrived yet. got his parts ordered for the HVAC, they're not, they haven't arrived yet. Does it just an issue again? No.
Could you all, and five is tied to seven, item seven, which is the plumbing at the jail, we'll talk about more specifically, but five and seven are somewhat tied together in terms of dealing with the overall mold situation up there, is that correct?
Yeah, your source of your mold is from several different sources.
And then, so we're, we're working towards completion of the kitchen issue. If you have not, could you guys get with the sheriff's department and present a timeline back to us of how we might approach the remaining areas of mold? I know the first floor needs to be addressed, I think administrative offices, kind of what that might look like, so we can begin to develop some further plans between the, the dealing with this. I assume people are going to have to be moved down, so the sheriff's office is going to need some notice, we're going to need, so do we have a plan? Have you begun to put something together? Could you, would you do that?
Well, as you're aware, the one thing we did put together was the building south of the jail, has a lot of administrative offices in it, we're able to secure that. We can move, now give us swing space to move people. I don't know what the status of that is at the moment, short of getting that building to the south, there, I don't think there's an option plan for those people.
Well, there's always affordable buildings that could be discussed, there's, I mean, there are options. Can't ask the board to fix something if they're not willing to do anything to help us help you, right? I mean, yeah, we want it fixed, but we can't move anybody out, well, do you really want it fixed at that? So those are discussions that need to be had with the sheriff's department about alternatives to something other than the building to the south. And then I know it generates, well, where do we park? Where do I, well, how bad do you want to fix something? Dominant, right?
Well, the partner thing is.
Well. I, I agree.
I agree.
It takes two willing partners to address something. I think the board has proven over time that we're willing to address things, A, when we know about it, and B, when we have a willing partner. So, anything else on item five? Okay, motion to receive.
See reports on five.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item six is the Luther Road corridor project. Thank you.
Yes, I'll put that back on there, really for District One, you were reviewing the turnpike plans, which you have, to see what, how you might want to move forward from the turnpike north to the county line.
And that, Brian and I are continuing to discuss that, what we might like to see, and then, once Brian and I have an idea, we'll get with Luther to get some additional foot.
And that'll just leave us on the recurring item, and there might not be anything to report each week.
All right. So motion to, ah, receive, sure.
Six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item seven is the plumbing at the jail.
Yes, we've discussed this before in this committee, and somebody came back up at the last budget meeting last week, so you guys asked that it be put on here again. Just to remind you, there was a presentation that Health and Safety had made with all the piping issues, and how we might attack that, and the plan that we brought to you last time was maybe putting pipe fitters in the building, just knocking out certain sections of it to see, what does that really cost, how big is the problem, and use that as a test to see if we want to continue down that road, or if we want to scrap that and go to Plan B. I've gotten one quote from a pipe fitter, it's $95 an hour, pretty expensive, and the last thing the sheriff had said was he would consider paying for the pipe fitter if this board was considered paying for the materials.
What is, materials?
Just the piping itself.
Yeah, then, have you, do we even have a vault part number to start with? We're going to have to come up with ad $100, or?
I think it's probably better to come up with a dollar amount and see how much piping we can do with that dollar amount rather than the other way around, because, you know, we can get in the mix of dollars pretty quick if we go the other way. Did I see where the sheriff's put it out for hiring? He did put a, a deal out to try to hire a pipe fitter as a full-time employee, but he didn't get any access from last time.
I don't know whether he did or not, it was listed on the.
It's posted on the website.
I, I don't know whether it's happened or not.
Who's got it? The sheriff?
Yes.
Yeah. So rather than hire a pipe fitter at $95 an hour, he was trying to hire his own in-house employee. This board last time just received that report and did not make a commitment to paying for materials at that time. Which is going to be, we don't even know which ones seem to be addressed, which ones seem to be addressed later. I know that they all need to be addressed, because they've never been addressed. The question, which ones, before we flip on this theme again or whatever, and start discovering new problems, it'd be nice to know which ones seem to be addressed now for the map.
Keith, why you hire a pipe fitter?
At $95 an hour.
If you can get one.
Would you say that it, that it should be looked at seasonally, like you'd want to do the, the hot during the summer, the cold during the winter, when they're not being fully used? That would shift where you might begin, depending on when.
How much? Well, we need to know how much money, but we don't know what we need to start.
He's a pipe fitter.
Pipe fitters, I want to tell us the problems.
Someone with enough experience with both cast iron, copper, and steel, who can come in and assess where we have leaks at planges, fittings, elbows, all those things, it would, it would be money well-stemmed to have an assessment done. That might give some better ideas to how much pipe would be necessary, an estimate as to the timeline, so on.
Okay. Then, exactly where I'm headed with this. Then my motion would be you instruct facilities management, the sheriff's office, and Jane to work together to put an RFP, RFP, whatever's the appropriate vehicle, out in order to get an assessment done, and determine, A, the amount of materials, the costs, et cetera, and priorities, so that we can begin to.
Are you looking, we'd be looking for a contractor to do that, I can, I think we discussed what those numbers would be.
Well, you just said we needed, before we can answer some of these questions in-house, it sounded to me like we need to know what it is we need to address, right?
Well, the prioritization is the key, because you're going to end up with $2 million worth of pipes that need to be retrofitted. You can't afford that, you're going to have to take a piece of it, and which piece is the key, and that's what that pipe fitter, that RFP can tell you, does you need, the 600,000 square feet, you need to start over here in the 10,000 square feet, knock this out. And I don't know which 10,000 out of the 600 he would choose. I think those, that's the report where they're scooting water would be a, I'm not a, I'm not a pipe fitter, but I think that would probably be a good place to start.
A rule of taste.
That's what it's put together with now. That's why. Too. We've got Billy Means, and that is pretty good stuff.
Are you saying a contractor, or are you saying hire an engineer first? I mean, what comes first?
What comes first is we find a pipe fitter, and we tell him we're going to give you some money to tell us how much pipe we need to replace in your donation. You, you buy his expertise, his on-the-ground, hands-on expertise, not an engineer, not another contractor who will come in and give you an inflated price for, for labor and materials. The approach would be to bring a tradesman in, to squirt him throughout the building and let him help assess what needs to be addressed first. Do you bring a sewer guy in, or are you supposed to go and say, oh, sewer guy, we take care of it? Or a chill water guy in, or a steam guy in? It's his area of expertise.
I've got a motion, there's a motion and a second, seeing are you clear of what we're looking for. Thank you, ma'am. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is anything else related to item seven?
Have we turned on the speed?
Yes.
Do we have to do this?
Yes. They're not any worse than they were when we turned it off, though, thank goodness.
Okay. So they say that was a step aside. Which.
Might have something.
Mike, what happened on seven, yeah? Motion to receive report on seven.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, suspicion. Item nine, correct?
Nothing.
Miles?
Nothing.
None. Item ten is done.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.